On the air. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the first official town council meeting for 2016. This would be January 5th, 2016. So I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and welcome everyone back from the holidays and wish everyone a happy 2016. And with that, let's just get right into it with roll call, please.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Doren Becker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hall?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. I'm not sure, I don't think we are joining.
No.
We're not joining. So, please, if I can ask our Sergeant Wilkinson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic of which stands one nation under God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sergeant. Adoption of our agenda tonight. I don't believe we have any changes, so is there action to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Public comment. Anyone here from the public on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. We're going to move right ahead to our consent calendar. We have three items for consideration. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimously passes. Let's move right on to our first presentation, which is recognition of said sergeant as he is our outgoing sergeant here in Yountville, and we are going to be welcoming our incoming sergeant. But first, I'd just like to invite Doug Wilkinson to join me at the podiums for a little recognition. This is a certificate of appreciation and recognition of contributions to the Yountville community by Sergeant Doug Wilkinson, with sincere appreciation to Sergeant Doug Wilkinson for his years of dedicated service to the town of Yountville and its residents. And I intentionally didn't give you this bottle of wine for the photograph, but this is also in our recognition of all the service you gave our community. Please enjoy that once the uniform is off.
Thank you very much, sir.
Any comments you'd like to share, then if you could also provide the introduction?
I will. Thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you very much. You have all made the last three years for me really, really wonderful. Yountville's a great town, and it's all because of you guys. It's been an honor and a privilege to work with all of you, and I'm actually looking forward to being able to come to some of these events and enjoy them instead of having to work them. So Sergeant John Crawford is going to be replacing me. You'll find John is a great guy, and he's a better public speaker than I am, so the quarterly reports will probably be a little less painful.
Yes, welcome.
Thanks for the opportunity. I look forward to working with everybody. Should be fun, and like Doug said, Yountville's a great town, and obviously the Napa Valley is a great community, and I'm looking forward to working with everyone.
Great. Thank you very much, Sergeant. And again, Sergeant Wilkinson, thank you very much for your dedication and service. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move right on now to our next presentation, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for our fiscal year ending June 30, 2015. And the presentation, Ahmed Badawi. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the audience. Thank you for having me. I'm glad to be here. Today, I'll be presenting to you the results of the fiscal year 2015 audit. I guess, so I'll just move my hand, and maybe you can move the slides. All right? So basically, what we're going to be covering today, I'll let you know who was the engagement team on the Yountville audit, what were the deliverables and the scope of our audit, areas that we emphasized on and why, what kind of audit opinion we issued and what that means to the town, give you some of the financial numbers, some of the required communications. It's probably, I hate to say, it's the most boring part of the presentation, but it's actually the only required part of the presentation. So that's the part I have to go through, and then I'll give you an update on the new accounting standards that are coming your way. So I'm going to start first by the engagement team. You see that I was the engagement partner. We had Metash Desai as our audit manager. We had two staff, Crystal and Iris. We always have a quality control partner. She is always in the background. She only reviews my work, make sure I adhere to professional standards, but no interaction really was at town. This is a requirement by professional standards to have another partner basically reviewing our work. And then we have access to our IT specialist in case the town have developed softwares internally or basically significantly modified softwares, then we would be using an IT specialist to help us understand the controls embedded in those softwares. In terms of the deliverables and the scope of the audit, we were mainly engaged to give an opinion on the Yountville Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. This is basically the city's financial state, the town's financial statement that include all your funds and all your activities. Because you are subject to government auditing standards, we also had to issue a report on our consideration of internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance with laws and regulations. We also performed an agreed-upon procedures on your GAN limit, which is the appropriation limit, and then finally, we are responsible to communicate with the governing body, which is what we're doing today. In terms of the areas that we emphasized on, there were three main areas we emphasized on. First area is revenues and receivables. Revenues by default is a higher-risk area, so we're not necessarily implying that the town of Yountville have some special risks that are not in other cities and towns. It is by default a high-risk area just due to the fact that there's more possibility for fraud or management overriding of controls. So by that, we basically send confirmations for your major revenue sources, your trans occupancy tax, your property taxes, your sales tax, and we confirm those. In addition to that, on your proprietary funds, we do a lot of ratio analysis to make sure that we can extrapolate the numbers, and we review the allowance for uncollective receivables. Capital assets is another area. Those are, capital assets is usually your largest assets, and we perform testing of additions and retirements, make sure that any maintenance expense were properly classified as maintenance and vice versa. If capital expenditures, then they were properly classified as such. Finally, the third area we emphasized on was the pension. This is brand-new area this year, not a new liability, but a new accounting standard that require you to account differently for that liability. So when we go through the numbers, you will see that you, the town have a new pension liability down the balance sheet. This was the first year of implementation, so we have performed additional procedures to review reports coming from CalPERS, matching to the town's journal entries, and a few other procedures. So it was another area of significance for us. In terms of the auditor's report, we have issued an unmodified opinion. This is basically, in simple terms, a clean opinion, a good opinion. The opinion does state that the audit was performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. What an unmodified opinion means, it means that the financial statements are fairly stated, that estimates are reasonable, disclosure is properly reflected in the financial statements, and that accounting policies have been consistently applied. This opinion used to be called unmodified in the past, unqualified, I'm sorry. It was changed recently to unmodified. The reason it was changed is because a lot of actually clients, when we tell them you got an unqualified opinion, they will be responding, "Why didn't we qualify?" And we would explain that, "No, you don't want to qualify for that." Actually, you don't, you want to be unqualified for that. So I think the report was, the title was modified to just reflect that we didn't really have to make any modification to the standard opinion. In terms of the financial statement numbers, so we wanted to give you kind of a summary over the last three years of the compositions of your assets, liabilities, and equity. You will see here that your two largest assets are your cash and investments and your capital assets. That's pretty typical for any city or town that we audit. Those are normally your two largest assets. You can see that it's been fairly consistent over the last three years. This new item deferred outflow of resources is really relating to pension implementation. I'm more than happy to get into the detail of what that number really mean if you're interested, but it is related to pension. So I'll keep it at that because I hear something else. In terms of the liabilities, this is a composition of your liabilities. Again, fairly consistent over the past. There was a new debt issuance during the year, and then here's a new net pension liability of almost $2.5 million that was added this year. I do want to clarify, this is not a brand-new liability. This liability always existed. It's just a brand-new accounting requirement for it to be on your balance sheet. So that is about $2.5 million that was added this year. And the next slide is regarding your net position or your equity, which is your assets minus your liability, and you can see it is really broken down into three categories: net investment and capital assets. Those are the components that are invested in your infrastructure assets, in your building and equipment and all these other assets. Then the restricted category is the category that have legal restriction on it. Those can be, you know, like gas tax money, can be grant money, can be bond money that was not spent yet, something that is not really under the council control. And then finally, the amount that was under your control is the unrestricted, and that's about 11.2 million. And I do have to say that even with the implementation of the new pension standards, you still actually had a very slight increase in the unrestricted net assets or net position, and that's a positive sign. You know, we audit a variety of cities in California, and we have seen this number go significantly negative as a result of implementing the new pension standard in a lot of agencies. So the fact that it's still positive is a good thing. The fact that it's actually going up is even a better thing. So I just wanted to kind of highlight that, that even with the implementation, you're still in a positive situation. You can see here, this is basically the results of your operations over the last three years. The yellow one is the governmental activities. Those are your governmental funds, so your general fund and your other tax and grant subsidized activities. The blue line are your business-type activities. Those are your enterprise activities, the fee-for-service activity. They both had positive results, and basically, I mean, the fluctuation sometimes is basically timing. Sometimes it's, you know, you may have grants in the prior year you didn't have in the current year that offset certain expenditures, but for the most part, I think it was positive results. Net cost of service to tax revenue. This is another ratio that we always provide to all of our clients. The net cost of service, we define that as the cost of basically running your various departments. If we look at your, let's say, public works or community development or any kind of activity in the town, we look at how much does it cost to run this activity and how much revenue are they able to generate on their own in terms of fees or grants? And the difference between those two numbers is normally what's going to be subsidized by tax revenues. So we compare that to the tax revenue. Of course, we want your tax revenue to be higher than the net cost of service. You can see in 2015, it is higher. Your net cost of service is about 6.7 million. Tax revenue is about 9.2 million. It's been higher over the last three years, but definitely it's getting, it looks like it's heading in the right direction year over year. In terms of the general fund, just focusing on the general fund, we look at your unrestricted fund balance, and we compare that to your annual expenditures. The idea is to see if all your revenue sources stop coming in, which is obviously a very unlikely scenario, how long can the town continue to pay bills? We have determined that you probably can continue to pay bills for about nine months. That is, again, a very healthy ratio. The recommended ratio by the Government Finance Officers Association is about two to four months. When I say the recommended ratio, that's the minimum ratio that they're looking for. Anything below that, you start getting concerned about the financial viability of the agency. So being above four months is definitely a good thing. We don't recommend that you bring it down to two to four months, for sure. So that's rating to the general fund, and then here, we're talking about the annual pension costs. That's basically your retirement plans, your CalPERS. 2015 is when we implemented the new accounting standards, which actually have led the pension cost to go down a little bit. But the numbers are just accounted for very differently in 2013 and 14 versus 2015. So the comparison is, you know, not necessarily apples to apple, but it just kind of gives you an idea, basically. In terms of the funded status, so these are new information. Prior to 2013, you really did not have access to the funded status of your plan. You were just part of a big pool that CalPERS is managing, and they just tell you how much you need to contribute to that pool. So now you actually do have actual numbers of how much assets you have in the plan, how much liability, and what is your unfunded liability. So you can see that in 2013, your unfunded liability was about 3.1 million, and in 2014 is about 2.4 million. The reason why we're using 2014 is because CalPERS is one year behind. So they are, for your financials for fiscal year 2015, you're always going to be using numbers that are one year old. The big drop in the unfunded liability is due to better-than-expected investment returns for CalPERS. They just did better than they were assuming. In terms of OPEB costs, OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits, and those are the retiree medical benefits. You can see that the cost over the last three years was fairly consistent. On the next slide, the funded status of the plan. Unfortunately, you're not required to have an actuary study done every year, so that's why you see that there was one in 2009, one in 2012, and probably one coming in 2015 that will be used for fiscal year 16 financial statements. In 2012, the town has started funding the plan, and as of that date, there was about 860,000 in assets and about 1.5 million in unfunded liability. Just to let you know that in 2018, this unfunded liability number will also be required to be reported on your balance sheet, same like the pension for this year. So now to the boilerplate part of the presentation, and you want this to be boilerplate. That means that we have no disagreement with the town, and everything went fine. Every time we have to adjust that, that means that we're having problems. So I'm glad to say that we didn't have to adjust any of this part of the presentation. On this slide, this is to communicate to you our responsibility as your auditors under generally accepted auditing standards. We're mainly responsible for expressing an opinion on your financial statements, responsible for evaluating internal controls over financial reporting, we're responsible for evaluating the tone at the top, making sure that management is sending the right message to the rest of the organization in terms of the importance of controls, consequences of committing fraud, addressing audit findings, and so on and so forth. We're also responsible for making sure that the town complied with all laws and regulations and communicate with the governing body. The town have a lot of responsibilities in this process. At the end of the day, the town is responsible for its financial statements. So even though we are hired to audit those financials, our audit only provide a reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance. We look at transactions on a test basis. We look at material items, not immaterial items, so there is always a possibility that there may be immaterial misstatements in those financials. So at the end of the day, the town management still take responsibility for the completeness and accuracy of those financial statements. We are responsible, of course, as your auditor as well, but just different level of responsibility. Management is also responsible for maintaining and establishing internal controls, for making all financial records available to us, for adjusting the financial statements for any errors, for establishing controls to prevent and detect fraud, inform us of all known and suspected fraud, and basically take corrective action when we have audit findings. In terms of independence, we are called the independent auditors, so we have to remain independent from the town. This is solely our responsibility, so the town does not really need to verify that or do anything. We follow professional standards, the Board of Accountancy rules, AICPA rules, and we actually circulate questionnaires to all of our employees, asking them to identify any direct or indirect relations with the town or town employees, or we take any individual who have any direct or indirect relation off the audit, but we have not really identified anybody. But this is solely our responsibility. In terms of the timing of the audit, we believe that the audit was performed in the timeframe agreed to with the town. In terms of significant accounting policies, like I mentioned, the town have implemented new pension standards. In terms of management judgment and accounting estimates, some of your numbers are not actual numbers. They are based on estimates, and that's acceptable as long as there is a reasonable basis behind these estimates. So we just wanted to give you some of the examples of the numbers that are estimated in those financial statements. In terms of sensitive disclosures, wanted to disclose to you some of the known disclosures that we believe are important and provide some valuable information. So I'm not going to go through them, but this is just a list of some of the ones we think are important. In terms of difficulties encountered during the audit, we really encountered no difficulties. We actually really enjoyed working with the town, and honestly, it's such a nice town to be able to come here. We have really nice lunches, and so definitely, we don't feel bad about driving here at all. In terms of significant adjustments and unadjusted differences, so we had, following significant audit adjustments were recorded by management to eliminate unavailable revenues and related loan receivables, and then there were some adjustments that the town management decided not to record. They were immaterial, so we were okay with not recording those. Sometimes the effort of recording those transactions is just a lot more than the benefit that you get, or it just doesn't really add a whole lot. So we are required to communicate to you the fact that management have decided to pass on those adjustments. We are not aware of any significant risk exposures other than matters communicated to us in the legal confirmations. We confirm with legal counsel and any outside attorneys. We are pleased to report that we had no disagreement with management. We had no material weaknesses identified during our audit. We have requested certain representations from management that are included in the representation letter dated December 22nd. This is a letter from management to us telling us that they have recorded all transactions, that they have disclosed to us all known facts, that they own all the assets, that just, it's a long list of representations that we put a lot of reliance on. In terms of, we're not aware that management has consulted with any other accounting firms on matters related to the audits. Other than our engagement letter and the representation letter, we had no other significant communication with management. There were no material uncertainties relating to events and condition, and we have not become aware of any fraud or instance of illegal acts. Finally, this is a listing of the new accounting standards that are coming your way. So you see that Maria is going to be busy in the next few years, talking to us about some of those standards. With that, I want to thank you again for the opportunity. This was our first year with the town, and we really enjoyed the audit. More than happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Thank you very much for the presentation, first of all. I'll ask, we do have a finance officer here, so I'm sure Vice Mayor Hall has something. He can't let it go. So he's got to have something, Vice Mayor.
Yes, well, thank you, first of all, for the presentation. What I want to commend you on with regards to this, because much of the stuff that you go through in the form or in the process of an audit is really just sort of validating what management's been presenting to you and what's been presented to the town in regard to its assets. And so what I think you've given us and what is helpful for people that don't necessarily deal in numbers all day long is really a good sort of anecdotal depiction of what it is that your processes that you go through and the checkmarks that you have to clear. I think we've all been fairly comfortable the last several years because we've gone through this process, sitting up here at the dais, getting those numbers presented. One of the things that I found remarkable, and it was due to the change in the Accounting Standard 68, was that they actually have you record as a liability, the pension, the unfunded pension liability. Isn't that actually maintained at or by CalPERS, or is it?
That is correct. The assets of the plan are maintained and invested by CalPERS, and the benefits are paid by CalPERS.
Right, and then they have, the town actually also hold on its books the unfunded component of that liability for the pension.
That is correct.
So it's interesting because they have you put, they have you gross up the assets and also increase the liabilities. What I also wanted to make sure I pointed out, and it was on your presentation, it's one that I think this council's taken very seriously in forms of funding the OPEB. And what you can see, if you go back to that slide, and although it's based on 2012 numbers, we have worked very diligently, and it's recorded and reflected here in the numbers, and we'll see, as you said, when we get our next actuarial review, that, you know, we've been able to bring down the component of the unfunded liability by about 25, while six on 21 is basically a third, 30 percent. So we're still making that commitment as an agency to ensure that we're funding that aspect. So we're not kicking down, we're not kicking the can down the road to ensure that we're going to be able to take care of our employees, the people that work for the town into the future, and that it's not going to be a liability for a future generation. So I appreciate the information and the input. It's always helpful with this kind of stuff to get the anecdotal stuff out there, and then charts and stuff like that are really helpful. So for me, it was really nice to see that put in a real, clear, succinct format. I don't think anybody really, besides myself, enjoys going through 162 pages of numbers. But that said, I appreciate all the information you provide, and I don't have any questions other than to commend you on your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
No, but thank you.
I still wonder if unmodified is still, is really the best alternative term?
So much better.
But it is better than unqualified, I will say.
I would agree with that.
It is very encouraging and positive news to hear that we're in several cases well above minimum requirements or minimum expectations, and so that's, as Vice Mayor just stated, that's been a priority for staff in the council for years, so we're going to just continue to be diligent about that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We hope to make this easy for you every audit.
You know, this was a, it was a pleasure. It was an easy enough audit. There is never a very easy audit.
Vice Mayor, Council, I just want to make a couple of acknowledgements.
And I was actually going to ask if you would introduce, in a timely manner, introduce our new finance director.
I think there's a few things I want to point out. Whenever we transition to a new auditor, it's always a little more, I'm going to use the word challenging, but that's not in a negative sense. It's just that a new auditor needs to come in, and they should. They don't know us, and that's part of the reason it's really important that we get an independent analysis. So it's always a bit more challenging and more time-consuming because they've got to look at and see things. As you know, this year was a little bit more challenging also because we've had a transition. We had an interim accounting technician and an interim finance director, and I want to acknowledge the efforts of Richard Arrow, Margaret Seaman, who was our interim accounting technician, as well as Celia King, our accounting technician, along with the whole management team, because the audit is not just all about the finance. It's also, as Mr. Badawi alluded to, it's how does the organization follow the policies and procedures in the organization? For me, that's one of the more important things because we had some good conversations. It alludes us to some areas that maybe we can do a little better job. So for me, it's really an important process. It's also, you know, I take great pride in the fact that our organization has some trends that are going up. I mean, I really like the one about our unrestricted funds and where we're putting money, and they're going generally the right direction. But I do want to acknowledge that it's a team effort, and that credit goes to the management team and the employees in the organization. And with that, I do want to also acknowledge, as the transition, Richard Arrow has been our interim finance director, contributed, and we do want to welcome officially to her first council meeting, Maria Ojeda in her capacity as our Town of Yountville Finance Director.
Thank you. Well, thanks. It's great to finally be here and meet all of you, and just, I could not have come to a better place. This is a lovely community, and you're fiscally stable, which is really great, and, you know, it's always nice to come to a council meeting where you've got really great news about your financials. So thanks to Badawi and the council team for all their great work, and to Richard and Celia and Margaret and everybody on the management team. I'm just really excited to be here, and we're living in North Napa, and I love my commute, and I found great daycare for my son, and I'm just so excited about this venture and looking forward to getting to know you and work with all of you, and I'm, you know, thrilled to be working with everybody on the management team, so.
Great, well, welcome. And we do like to keep the bar set quite high, so we welcome you to keep it there, or even raise it up if you'd like.
Looking forward to it. Thanks.
Great. Yeah, and thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you for having me. Have a good evening.
And we have really good dinners as well, so.
Oh, I know, but I tried to convince my wife to come with me tonight, but she can't. Some other time.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go on to our next presentation, National Citizen Survey.
All right. Well, we have exciting news. In the upcoming weeks or so, a survey's going to be distributed to all the Yountville residents. The survey is being completed in coordination with the update of our general plan, our strategic plan, as well as the Parks and Rec strategic plan. Staff plan, plans on using the results of this survey really as a starting point for the updating of all these important planning documents. Gaining residents' opinions on the current status of the town and really better understanding their values will influence what we put in that plan in order to guide the future of Yountville, and really guide the total future direction as, for us as a staff, as well as the decisions to be made by council and other boards to really shape Yountville in the next several years. Now, the survey is called the National Citizen Survey. It's supported by ICMA, the International City-City Management Association, and the National Research Center, I'm just going to call them NRC, they're going to help us write the survey, distribute the survey, receive the survey, analyze the survey. Really, all they do is send me one email, and I say, "Okay, you do the rest." And it's, they're great to And it's, they're great to work with. We work with them, I personally have worked with them previously in other jurisdictions, and so we're really excited to bring this into Yountville. This is helpful because the results are then compared to every other community that has ever taken this survey, and so that will provide us with a whole bunch of benchmarks to really see how we're doing nationally, on how our residents feel about several topics, such as how Yountville is as a place to live, raise children, work, visit, retire, the overall feeling of safety here, the overall economic health, ease of travel, how likely, there's a question, how likely are you to stay in Yountville in the next five years? How likely are you to recommend Yountville to other people? So it's a good series of topics and questions that we're going to be asking our residents. Now, the report, what's also nice is NRC, after they analyze all the data, they're going to come and present a report to us, most likely in a council meeting, just giving the results of the survey, along with all these benchmark data. Their report will also have a separate comparison schedule with specific benchmark communities, ones that have been designated as destination communities. So on one side, we'll say, this is how you do compared with everyone in the nation. Another one will be, how do you compare with all the other destination communities out there? So it's going to be communities like Park City, Utah, Aspen, Colorado, Delmar, Coronado, Seaside, and others that kind of fit the same mold. So residents are going to have the opportunity to respond by mail or online, Spanish or English. We really want to have this in as many, really, as many ways as possible to get their responses so we can have a good sample size to really determine what the status is of Yountville according to the residents' perception there. So most, some of the questions are standard, the same ones given to all the other communities, of course, that's so that we can benchmark the data with them. That's how we can compare the results. Others are custom questions that will help us better understand residents' opinions of very Yountville-specific topics. So again, we're excited to see the results of the survey. It's going to be going out in the next few weeks here, attached in your council packets. It's also a draft of the survey as it stands now. It's always good to occasionally do these check-ins with residents, especially before updating important planning documents like the general plan. So this will really give us a starting point to go off as we craft these important policies for the next several years of Yountville.
Great, thank you. Questions? Councilor Mueller.
I'm going to ask kind of some open-ended questions, and you may have some answers to them, you may not. We've got a pretty unique community here. One, a third of our residents are at the Veterans Home. You know, and quite frankly, a lot of them really have a hard time, even knowing the difference between what's happening in the Veterans Home, you know, and Yountville. And not because, you know, they're not cognizant of that, they just don't distinguish those two very well, you know, and how they're different. And also, we've got probably 25% of our residents are single-family, I mean, this is their second home. So I guess my first question is, do you have like an estimate of what kind of return you're expecting on a percentage basis to make this a valid survey? I mean, for example, if you only have 7% of the people that you send us to returning it, and what the experience may be has been, and how you're going to factor in some of those unique issues of Yountville?
Yeah. It really depends on the community. In the previous community, we had a 30% response rate, and everyone cheered for joy, saying, wow, that's incredible. For us, who knows what that will be. Regarding, what's nice in the analysis is the responses that the residents give is all going to be geo-coded, and so we'll be able to pull up on a map saying, wow, everyone that's really unhappy lives in this one neighborhood, why is that? You know, we'll be able to track analysis that way. We'll say, wow, Richard's neighbors really don't like him. So it'll be really nice to have that kind of data with us so we can better incorporate that. If we can see there's a trend within a specific zoning district, for instance, maybe that's something we can address as we're looking at the zoning standards for that district. So that's helpful information to have. Regarding the response rate, I'd say it would be successful if we had a 30, 40% response rate, but a lot of that's going to be left up to the NRC to see what they say.
What I would also acknowledge, you know, we are unique in our distribution as far as the Veterans Home. We are not unique as far as community goes that have second homeownership, especially some of these destination resort communities. So I think one of the advantages to working with a national ICMA and NRC is that this is what they do. So they've tried to work on something that's going to give us some meaningful data. I'm also going to convey to you that this is a starting point. You know, we may do this every three years, so we have a benchmark for service delivery and some of the others. As we move into the general plan, we may end up having to do some different outreach and some more specific surveys, because you're going to find, if you've looked at this, that it's a broad generalization that gives us some framework. And that's helpful. Are we going in the right direction? Are people concerned about this? And we're being honest, we're asking some questions. You'll note in the survey, we ask about the balance between business and tourism and residential concern, and we know that that's a dialogue. I think what we're really trying to say is, we're starting in a very trackable format. We're certainly going to be working on public outreach to encourage people. In today's environment, the second homeowners is, I mean, my knowledge of a number of second homeowners is there is committed to Yountville as full-time residents. I also know full-time residents that will say, don't count those second homeowners as much as you count me. Yeah, it doesn't work that way in our community, as you know. They're all paying taxes and providing the services, so we want to try and, I think we'll be very interested to track that. Nathan mentioned the geo-caching, and that's going to be important, especially now with our GIS. We will be able to sort of cross-correlate with some of the information to see if there are some different themes between full-time residents, second-time homeowners, and geographic locations. But I do want to say, you know, it's also, this is a very scalable type of a survey that is cost-effective, but it will not, when we get into the general plan, I will assure you, there will be some more challenging conversations and surveys that are more focused. And when we do the Park and Rec Master Plan, we'll have to do some more focus. But those will be, this will give us a good starting point, and then as we go further into those processes. You know, it's an interesting thing, because we've had some conversations at the staff level. We don't know what the results are going to be. We have some hope and some expectations on what people anecdotally tell us. I know that the council has asked before, how do we benchmark this? What do we know? And so this is going to be our first attempt. This program's been along, and through ICMA, they have a number of cities that do this on a, like I say, a cycle, so they can compare trend lines, how they're doing. Some do it every other year. So we'll be coming back to you, and some of these questions will be really good to ask the representatives when they come out to help us interpret that data. What I will share is, staffs made it real clear what we think are some of the unique characteristics of our community and the challenges that they may have in surveying. And anybody that's doing surveying now will tell you, the world is changing with the amount of online cell phones, various different things, the landline demise, getting people to return. So, you know, we're going to be doing a whole lot of marketing, making sure people know that they want to come in, they can do the survey online at the library or whatever. So we'll be working on that, though. But I do think, you know, you bring up a really great question, which is, the Veterans Home residents do not participate in many of the same community aspects. So we will be able to understand what that feedback looks like because of the ability to code those.
Great. Other questions? Councilor Dornbecker.
Yes, I noticed that in the, in the, the quote for Yountville, it said that, you know, this, they would provide a Spanish translation option free of charge and other things, as long as we had the, and the quote was valid through December 31st, and we had to make the initial payment by then. Did we do that?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other thing that I was wondering about in the, when will this be done, completed?
We don't have a perfect schedule yet with that. We just wanted to let you know about it as we're here in the starting stages of it all. We're hoping to get everything finalized and have, send it out to the residents, hopefully in the next month and a half. And then it'll take probably about four months to give the residents enough time to give the responses, send a second, third follow-up, saying, make sure everyone knows about the survey, and then give NRC enough time to analyze and then come out and do the report.
Well, we're also planning, aren't we, to poll the residents about certain things about the environment for the Go Green Team? Is there, you know, is there, will this accomplish that, or will that be something separate, and will that turn people off of being asked too many, you know, too many times to fill out a questionnaire?
I, part of this has to do with what the Go Green Team's plan is, and since that one hasn't been fully defined yet, I'd imagine they'd be separate things. This serves the purpose towards the general plan, towards the strategic plans that we're going for, whereas the Go Green Team has a very specific purpose, which will most likely be attacked from a different front, rather than like a mail-in questionnaire.
And it's probably, and it's going to have to go out sooner rather than later.
For sure, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor? Yes, thank you. Very briefly, is this only electronic, or is this going to be a?
Both. You can choose to mail it in or go to the website and type it in.
So people get a mail-in option, and then I guess there's like a control number or something, so you don't get people doing multiple surveys?
Correct.
Obviously, these people do this for a living. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one question. I'm still confused. I agree that the second and third homeowners have the same validity as those who live here full-time. But you mentioned the geo-tagging by establishing them. I don't see a question in here, is Yountville your primary residence? Is that still not a valid question? Or did I miss that?
That question isn't asked. We do, on the very last page, there's things that best describes the place that you live. Is this house rented, or is it owned? So there's questions like that, so we can say, oh, wow, it looks like renters say this about Yountville, whereas owners say this about it. This is going to be sent to the residents, rather than the mailing address that the county has logged for everyone. It's going to be sent to the residents so that we can capture both owners and renters.
One of the analyses that we can do on our end is cross-compare the results to our utility billing addresses, and it will not be 100% accurate, but as a general rule, if the utility bill goes to a Yountville address, then it's generally a primary residence. If it goes to a secondary address, then it's, and again, that's not a perfect, but that's a fairly reasonable extrapolation in terms of trying to segregate some of the information.
Understood. But why wouldn't you just make that a line item in here and then make it more accurate?
We can ask them.
If I'm, if the rest of the council doesn't agree, I'm fine with that. From my perspective, I still think that's a, I still think it's a very valid question in this community, especially given the fact that not all community members feel that second and third homeowners are on the same level as those who live here. I just think it's a valid question. So I wanted to put that out there.
And I was going to ask, how much customization is possible here?
It's looking, I'd have to work with NRCs to see if on that fifth page, we can ask another demographic question, that is something along those lines. Really, the point of asking a question like that, what response would you expect from it? Why would that data be interesting to note, to say, oh, those who are second homeowners have a different opinion than Yountville than the first homeowners? Do you get the point of what you want to ask?
No, but I think, I think if not all of us, many of us are asked frequently about and are concerned about whether people are living here full-time or not. Not to categorize them, but to identify if there are opportunities that we are not providing that are keeping people from being here full-time, for example. If, if young families want to be here, but the school is, you know, only K5, and they've got older children, maybe they don't want to move here. It's just a hypothetical, but I don't think that data would be.
We can check. I mean, there is one that talks about the length of time that you've lived in the community.
Well, but I don't think that answers the question. Anyone that says, how long have you lived here, will take that as, how long have I owned my residence?
I understand where you're coming from, and we will see what the ability on that one.
And to a similar point, if, did you have any other questions?
No, no, no.
In terms of customization, you mentioned the second benchmark reporting about destination communities. Are those predetermined by the survey team?
We can choose who we want.
We can.
Yeah. They provided me with a list of.
These are sample.
Yeah. They provided me with a list of 50-some-odd communities that they consider destination communities. Some fit us more than others, and so we'll manipulate it a little bit, saying, no, we don't really fall in line with, say, Reno, Nevada, nearly as much as, say, Delmar, California, you know.
Well, and I would suggest, we don't, I don't see anybody from the North Bay area. So, I mean, I think we'd be curious about things like Sonoma, Healsburg, other, other communities that are almost exactly like Yountville, like Mammoth Lakes, who are the exact opposite of the norm like we are, which is heavy TOT revenue-based with lower property tax revenues.
Correct.
Carmel, other places like that.
One of the things we're limited by is we can only compare ourselves to communities that have done this survey.
Fair enough.
So we'll look at the list of everyone in California that has done the survey, as well as the list of all of their destination communities, and we'll come up with some kind of hybrid list that compares us with the California communities as well as.
And I trust that you're able to identify the demographic comps that make sense, as long as they're not doing it from halfway around the country, just randomly picking the same what they consider destination communities.
Yeah, we'll double verify the list before they.
Because comparing us to San Francisco wouldn't make a whole lot of sense. That's a destination community, so.
Yep.
Okay. Steve, you were going to add.
My comment was that, while this is a, not every community does this, and the benchmark data, as Nathan alluded to, is only as good as the comparator. So a number of our neighboring communities have not participated in something like this. So that, that is the value of participating in a benchmark survey as opposed to just going out. I will also point out that this is also a very cost-effective way, because a customized survey in this range is going to be over $40,000 to $50,000. And we want to focus more on coming up with the general plan, because as the councils alluded to, there are some more challenging conversations as we move into the next 18 months. We're getting some of that and that level of engagement. So this is really sort of a, a good litmus test of how we're doing and what are some of the issues. And we're starting here to show the community we want to hear from them. So that's the first thing the survey is really going to show.
Will we have access to all the data collected from all the communities? Not just the ones that they've designated as comparison?
Yeah, there'll be two different benchmark reports. One for the select ones, and then one with everybody. So it.
All right, so if we, if out of our, if out of our destination comparisons, we feel like there's a community out there that we'd like to compare ourselves to, we can do that independently?
Yeah, we can always.
We can see that data as well as the data.
We're really interested to see what Aspen came up with. We can always go to Aspen and see the data they got, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Very good.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see what the results are, and we will encourage everyone to participate.
Great, thanks.
Let's move on to the Yountville Arts Underpass Fine Art Installation Update. I know we're going to be having a meeting on this very soon, a community meeting.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. I'm very excited to be here to talk about an update with the Yountville Arts Commission Fine Art Underpass Project, which is something that the town and the Arts Commission has taken on this year. So just a little bit of background, earlier this year, we put out a call for entry around the country online, and we received over, I think, 40, 40 submissions, and they were really cool. It was great to see all the creativity and artistic talents. So the Arts Commission spent some time setting, putting together some criteria, and then narrowing the list down to top 10. And then after that, we had a special meeting where we narrowed it down to our top three. And what we'd like to do is bring these top three artists to Yountville, and we're hosting, you can go to the next slide, oh, good. We're hosting a meeting on the 11th at 5:30 at the Community Center, and it's going to be a great opportunity to hear from these artists. They'll have a 15-to-20-minute presentation, and then it's going to be very engaging. We'll be spending. We'll be spending some time discussing in small groups, the artist's ability to work with the public, because for us, this is a permanent project, and we really want to hear feedback from residents, and the business owners, and from town staff as well. And we'll also talk about what their style is, and if we think it will fit for that location. So I encourage everyone to attend, and we look forward to a great meeting.
Great. Any comments?
I have a question.
Councilor Dornbecker?
Please. Unfortunately, I have a meeting at 7:00 PM on Monday night, the 11th, with a client. Is there, do you have any idea how long we will be in there?
We should be pretty close to ending by then.
Would we?
Yes.
I'll just be late for that meeting. That's fine. Okay, thank you.
Invite the client to this meeting.
There you go.
Uh, two, or Vice Mayor, a question?
I do have one question, thank you, sir. I'm adding.
Appreciate it.
Well, I was adding something else.
I said that out there.
Multitasking. Yes, thank you. All right. On that, my question is, you know, the way I've always seen the underpass, and I think many people in this community see it that way, is it's, it's really the bridge between the town proper to the Veterans Home. And so, in principle, except for the courtyard, in principle, or the golf course, is there, can you tell us, without going into too much detail, if there is any involvement or participation from the Veterans Home as well with this process? Or from one of the artists?
Can you cover that?
Well, we, I think we did reach out to the Veterans Home as community stakeholders to come to this meeting, but I'm, we're hoping for, for feedback from them. I don't know, Sam, if you have any other comments?
We did. We sent direct notification to some of the, the staff there at the Veterans Home, as well as through them for the general membership, and of course, through the newspaper and that, to hopefully attend, and we'll continue to engage with them, even if they don't help choose an artist. I think the goal is to definitely consider that in any design. So these artists aren't presenting a design to us on Monday night, it's just about choosing an artist to move forward with. And so I think that that's very much a part of how the Arts Commission sees this, is that there needs to definitely be involvement with the Veterans Home.
And I think that's an important thing, that we want to make sure that you're all aware of, and the communities are aware of. This is not come vote for a design, it's vote for the artists, artist team, that we are going to work in a collaborative partnership as a community to develop what is the end product. So, one of the screening criteria for the Commission was trying to work with people that, one, created a style that the Commission felt was appropriate, but also were comfortable, and I'm going to say even embraced, public involvement. So, we're going to have, as a community, several more meetings and interface opportunities, focus group meetings, things like that, with whomever is selected. So, you know, it's a, for the community, I think it's going to be a very interesting six to eight months, as we begin that process, to integrate and come up with what that is. So I'm kind of excited. It's very unique for our community, and hopefully, it will engage and involve people that choose to. And I think it's also going to be a very unique art project within Napa County, and I take a lot of pride that our community has really stepped up, and is one of the leaders in Napa County, as far as its support for arts and a variety of things. And I will assure you that, I think a fair statement is, the Arts Commission was very clear when they used the word "a fine art installation." They want this to not be what would be considered a kind of classic postcard mural. This is supposed to be something that the community is going to help us create with the artists, that is going to be a, a fine art presentation. And I think you, you'll see that when you meet the artists. It's a, I think, going to be a very exciting.
Like what?
And, and we're going down a path that we don't quite know where we're going. For all of us that are very structured, this one's got some bumps down the road that we've all got to be, curves, I should say, not bumps, curves, as we go through, and then we'll craft that end decisions.
All right, hold on. Councilor Dornbecker?
But I assume that there will be representations of other art installations that these artists have done.
Yes, they've all been asked to bring at least 10 slides of art that they have installed, yes.
Councilor Mueller?
So can you also discuss, especially for the public, who, this is all new, the, the financial aspects of this? Is this going to be paid for by the town? Is this also evolving? Is it only going to not be paid for by the town?
This is, this funding, at this point, is only the seed money for the, by the Commission to go this far. One of the discussions was that if we're going to, one, I'm sure they will be asking you for funding, but I think there's an expectation, based on the council's dialogue to them previously, they're going to need to work on a fundraising campaign. So they really feel it's important that the community's involved and engaged, so that they buy in, and are part of, and want to contribute. So right now, the funding is not secured, so I think that's something everybody needs to fully understand. We're getting some ideas, so we know what that particular artist, but I would think that you will see a proposal for some funding. I think there'll be a community challenge. There may be some outreach to Tourism Improvement District, or some things like that, but that part is not fully resolved, because we don't know what we're, we're going for in funding. So that, that will be part of the behind-the-scenes work, that I'll take on a greater role while the Commission is actually working on all the fun. I will work on, how do we go give them the tools to help them implement it?
And we've been very clear with the artists upfront, since the beginning, that this project does not have funding, and that that will be a key piece, is moving forward, that we have to create a fundraising plan, and they're all aware of that. They know they're not going to be installing the mural in two months, or something.
I was going to ask the same question, but is it, I want to understand, was the selection considering the costs of these artists?
No.
So if one requires $10,000, and one requires a million dollars?
The jury did not look at costs at all. They looked, they're looking for the best possible artists that we could, we could come for. And it was interesting to see the, because we did ask that question, but the jury didn't see it. So, as staff, I, you know, but now they know. But there's a, a very, you know, break scale between even these three terrific artists, what, what they charge. So, they are all regional, for the most part. The farthest one is coming from the Portland area, which is in our favor. And again, they didn't see that criteria either, but then the lodging costs and travel is savings, too, so.
So you kept the, the Commission as neutral on all of those types of factors as possible?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have additional? Just very quickly, did you present a scope of work to the artists at this point? That, like, one wall of the underpass, not both walls?
Right, so that's the wall, on the north side of, of the pass, that was presented to them. So they know the scope as far as, this is the size of the wall, and this was what we were requiring, so you couldn't actually affix, like, a panel or something to it. It has to be basically painted on the wall, or a similar product, because there are different, really scientific, amazing, new things that have come, where they can actually make murals in a studio, and then come in and install them, and it's basically like putting paint on a wall. And all three of these artists have actually worked with Caltrans in the past, which was, was one of the criterias that the Commission was looking at. But they really are, for the most part, looking at it by the scale of the project, the size of the wall, and then we did also give them some information on the amount of public meetings, and contact in general, to get to the design, or through the design phase, that they would have to commit time to that as well.
So that's part of the scope of work that you identified for them?
Absolutely, yes.
And the logic behind the north wall versus the south, versus both walls, was that purely a Commission decision?
It was about the vine trail positioning, I think, came into play, as we discussed it. So as the vine trail project comes through, that'll be widened on that side, creating a little bit more of a gateway over there. And it, as far as traffic-wise, I believe we get more traffic coming north than we do south. But the long-term plan, and if financially, this fundraising is just this amazing, you know, windfall of money, the goal would be to do the entire, the, either both sides, or even the ceiling and the side.
I think that's exactly what Sam was saying. The part of the goal is, if people get excited about what they're seeing, and it generates, because it's very hard to get the, oh, please donate for the underpass project. If we get some ideas behind it, we may be, I would tell you, the Commission would love to do both. What I would also say is, in a quick analysis, that particular angle has higher visibility as the entry point, because most of our traffic, from just doing traffic count analysis, most of our traffic enters northbound coming in. So whether they actually turn left or right on California, they will see, looking at that north wall, as opposed to the south. We do expect, you know, the vine trail has previously communicated and shared their interest in art projects on, and, and we've been letting them know that we have one that can't get, I don't think there'll be one that's closer to the, to the trail. So we've invited them, and they've indicated that they're supposed to have somebody.
And we've also been attending, they have their own Arts Committee on the Vine Trail Coalition, and we've been attending those meetings as well.
But after today's Board of Supervisor meeting, and the couple hours spent discussing the vine trail, I wouldn't hold much weight in funding mechanism there. There are other concerns that they have right now, but who knows?
They're bringing on a fundraiser just for the art.
Right.
I don't know if that'll be in jeopardy, then.
But I would also say, our project.
The route itself is more in jeopardy than the art component.
But I think, Priya mentioned early on, that, you know, this is actually not a new conversation in Yountville. It's one that's over a decade old, and it's been started, moved at different places, and I think we're kind of excited now that there is a community interest in doing it, and we'll see if it goes to the next step. But we're not dependent on the vine trail, that.
No, 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 that's not where I was going with that. No, and I, I was going to commend the, the Arts Commission and staff, because I know that this has been a conversation for at least a decade, and there's an effort for some weeks or months, but that was also before we actually formalized the Arts Commission, too. So I think bringing that together is, has helped this, this project move forward.
You know, I'm, I'm a big fan of our Arts Commission, and arts in general. This has the potential to really be a very unique, unifying opportunity for our community to come together and create something, and participate in that process. And, you know, that, that's kind of neat. So, I mean, but like a lot of things at art, it's very organic, and sometimes we're not used to the organic process.
Not to get too into the weeds on the scope of work, but did you include any kind of maintenance schedule? Cleaning, or graffiti?
They would have to give us instructions on cleaning, and then also, they all have to apply a graffiti-proof top, or some sort of surface on it. And there is a guarantee through them, that if that fails, that they would come out for a certain period of time and, and repair the mural.
Okay.
And I just wanted to touch on kind of next steps, if people are wondering. So, out of this meeting, we hope to have consensus on a, everyone will be invited to vote for the artists that they see as a good fit for our community, and we will then start working on a contract with the artists, and kind of the first phase of that is not necessarily, you know, the mural, it's the design process. And so that'll kind of be that first step. And, and funding, the Arts Commission has some funding to start that design step, through our budget process, and their fundraising dollars, and then we'll work on the future of how that looks.
Just a thought that occurred to me, I know that we're doing this in the Community Center, so it won't be televised, this meeting on Monday. As we get into the design, maybe we get a sense of, especially talking about getting participation from the Veterans Home, if there is a way to visually cover the design process for people that can't attend, and if there are going to be multiple meetings, it might be possible, a presentation can be.
We can have one there.
Given to the Allied Council, or.
Yeah, we can have a meeting onsite at the Veterans Home, and encourage people to attend.
So just something to keep in mind, as you're scheduling that out, but it sounds really, really exciting.
Yeah, we have over 60 people to coming Monday night to that meeting. I anticipate, those are who have RSVP'd, so I'm anticipating a lot more, actually. It's very exciting.
And you can find any, all of our information about the Arts Commission on the Town of Yountville's website, and if you want to attend, there's a link, you can click on that. If you don't have access to a computer, please call us, or you can stop by. But we've done a great job getting the information out there, and again, this is a really exciting process, to bring the community together, and it's going to make it a much beautiful place, so.
Yes, and many of the social media and email blasts, it's been pretty effective.
Yeah, I've been working that.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. So next Monday, 5:30, Yountville Community Center. Okay, next up, our recycled water program update. We're getting a lot of updates tonight. Let's do it. Welcome, Bearded One.
All right, Happy New Year. Thank you for the opportunity to kind of tell our story about what we've been doing.
Don, let me just do a real quick, for everybody who's at home, I want to acknowledge and introduce Don Moore, our Utility Operations Manager.
Thank you, Steve.
Is, is that microphone on? Do we have a green light on there?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we recently finished the, the recycled water project. We're very proud of it. This picture is taken atop the, from atop the fuzzy filter.
Sure.
Yeah. Next slide. So I just want to get into the reasons for the project, and the previous, the previous project before this one that was completed in 2010. The town operates the wastewater treatment plant under a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit, or you may be familiar with NPDES permit. And it's a five-year permit, and we had some requirements that were of the previous permit. With, the requirements had to be met by December 2015. We met all those requirements early in August, so we're very happy about that. Some of those were electric, electrical system upgrades pertaining to the recycled water pumps, also the upsizing of the recycled water distribution pumps and pipeline. With this project, we added about a mile of, of new pipe to bring on a new user. The addition of variable frequency drives to the recycled water pumps, what that means is, it's a, it's for power efficiency, so when the pump is called to run, it ramps up slowly, not causing a large demand. We can cycle, or kind of dial the pump speed down to meet a particular flow rate. So, it's a, it's a more efficient system. The biggest thing for, operationally for us, was the installation of the supervisory control and data acquisition. What, that's SCADA, and what that means is, the ability to remotely monitor the goings-on of the treatment plant, and also provides control, so we can turn on pumps, open, close valves. I've spent many sleepless nights wondering about the plant before SCADA was implemented, even just getting out of bed and, and coming to the treatment plant to make sure everything is going fine. Now, I can just roll over, take a look at the, log into the iPad, and take a look, and rest assured, everything is fine. Or start, or stop, or change, change what's not, not working for us. So it's a great thing. I just want to let you know also, we're not completely finished. You're going to hear probably SCADA in the future, hopefully near future. We don't have the whole, the whole entire treatment plant linked to the SCADA system, but all the remote sites and several aspects of the treatment plant are, so. So I'll just go to the next, we can go to the next slide. So I wanted to acknowledge the, the team members that made the project possible, including the design team of Ted Witten and Wendy Ziegler from GHD, previously Winsler &amp; Kelly. Gelati Construction was the low bidder, and the general contractor for the project, with Andre LaBarle as the project lead. Matt Scoble provided project management, construction project management, and Danny Willow provided construction inspection with Consolidated Construction Management. I'd also like to recognize the utility operators, Jeff White, Terry Moylan, Steve Browning, and Nick Hickman, that were very beneficial, and, and I don't think the, the entire project would have been as successful without their, their input and their help bypassing, de-watering different, different processes of the treatment plant. Also, the new pipe that was installed as part of the project, we were able to capture all of that in the GIS, so we have all of that captured for future use in five years, 10 years. If someone needs to do something to that pipeline, we'll know exactly. If someone needs to do something to that pipeline, we'll know exactly where, where it is. Next slide. This is a picture of our, the treated effluent holding pond. So from here, we can either deliver pump to the recycled water customers or discharge to the Napa River. The State Water Resources Control Board recognizes several levels of treatment for non-potable recycled water use. The first being disinfected secondary 23. The significance of the 23 is, is a lab process where they set up several dilutions and sample, samples that we send them. And the, the MPN is the most probable number. So the end result after that calculation can't exceed 23, most probable number in a seven-day period. The next highest level is the disinfected secondary 2.2 and very similar to the first, cannot exceed the 2.2 most probable number. So we're able to provide and, and treat to the highest level, the disinfected tertiary or what's commonly referred to as Title 22 unrestricted level. This has, it has the same requirements with the most probable number, but there are additional requirements regarding the turbidity and the chlorine contact time of 90 minutes. The turbidity is the clarity of, of the water, has to remain below two NTUs. And that's the nephelometric turbidity units is the, is the measurement of the turbidity. So the disinfected tertiary is the least restrictive, can be used for, for additional uses. It can be plumbed inside of buildings. It just is, is less restrictive than, than the other. Okay. So we, we talked about SCADA and this picture is, the slide on the left is kind of the 1977 version of SCADA. And it's more of a monitoring system than anything. It really, if a, we have several processes that are set on timers or based on flow that a pump turns on or turns off. And really the, the whiteboard up in the high middle section there, if a pump turned on, a light came on. There was no control. You can't turn on any pumps or anything from that system. You see utility operator Terry Moylan on this, on the slide on the right is logged into the SCADA network and can, from, from those two screens can turn on, turn off, open valves remotely. We can now, instead of driving five miles out to Chimney Rock Winery to manually open a valve, we can open and close the valves right there. And anything that we can do from that system in the office, we can do at home on the iPad. So we're actually controlling that particular computer from, from remotely. So if someone's on that computer and someone else is logged in and using the iPad, you actually see the mouse and the, the cursor move. And it's, at the beginning, it was kind of, kind of creepy, but-
So you're saying there's not a lot of resale value on the, the equipment on the left?
Uh, we want to frame that and maybe kind of have it so the lights turn on and off and so it's kind of a, kind of a little remembrance of the past. Yeah. Next slide. So these are a couple of screenshots that are taken actually from the iPad. The slide on the left shows the system overview. And you see the, there's, there's a couple of boxes that are small and gray and they really just kind of indicate a process of the treatment plant. The ones that are show a little bit more going on with, with color and maybe it shows a pump indication, though that's what's brought into SCADA that we can currently control. So there's, and not every process is listed on that system overview at this time. So when we move forward with additional SCADA implementation, that, there may be two or three screens added to that, that we'll be able to fully control the plant remotely and monitor it. The slide on the right is showing a representation of the, one of the recycled water user sites. So the, right in the middle of the page is the, is kind of a representation of the pond. So we get a visual of the pond level. And then below that is a footage indicator that helps us make decisions on better decisions. Like I said before, previously, we would have to drive out to the user sites. You know, we could go to two or three sites to see where the level of, you know, how much are the, are the customers using and making decisions and then turning the valves. So that could take 45 minutes to an hour where now we can, we can get a good idea of what's going on in just a few clicks of a mouse. So here we have an aerial view of the entire recycled water distribution system. The blue dot kind of in the middle to the left, that's the wastewater treatment plant and the highlighted green around that is the golf course. We've been irrigating that property since 1977. The first kind of white line there is, signifies Highway 29. And as we head out to the other highlighted areas, that next white line is Silverado Trail. Down kind of in the right, still keeping in the highlighted area, down toward the right is Chimney Rock, right, yeah, right there is the Chimney Rock property. And there's a small orange section kind of to the left of that, that is the Clotevall property. Further up into the, kind of the same color, that is the Ragusi property that we've been irrigating. And just, just north of that is Stags Leap. Across Silverado Trail is the Mandavi property. And when we, we have been in a, kind of a continuing yearly short-term agreement with Mandavi. As a result of this project, we secured a long-term agreement with them. They have four ponds on that property and when they became a, a long-term customer, it nearly doubled our storage capacity so we, so we could provide more recycled water. As you can see from that, you know, that, that's a lot, that's a lot of property, close to 300 acres that they're irrigating there. Up, up in the right, I'm sorry, in the, in the middle, up toward the top, that's our newest, that's our newest customer, Behringer property, Treasury Wine Estates. If you're going out Fennel Road, instead of turning left to go out to Yountville Cross Road, if you turned right, you would be, go into, into Behringer. And that's, that's our, our newest customer. Next slide. So this is a picture of the installation of the pipe to get to the Behringer property. And just some, some, some quick totals. In 2010, we recycled 59% of the total effluent produced at the wastewater treatment plant. In 2014, we were able to recycle 85%. So the addition of Mandavi and several other factors, including, you know, the bad news of the drought, but it, it allowed us to, to really recycle quite a bit. We just crunched the numbers today and found that we were 87% in 2015, so. So like I said, approximately one mile of new pipe was installed to bring water to, there was some additional work at Mandavi, some pipe installation to make that a permanent customer. So about a mile of pipe was installed. All the vineyard sites are tied into the SCADA, so that saves a lot of time and makes our work more efficient. So we don't have to drive out to do that. We still, we still do drive out so we can make sure that the level indicator is reading what it is indeed, so we don't cause any problems. So the project, we, we replaced the recycled water pumps and there were additional minor improvements in and around the wastewater treatment plant as part of the project. This is the completed discharge point at the Behringer property. The pipe comes up and kind of turns down in a, in that gooseneck kind of shape. That provides a, an air gap. The, the banks of the, of the pond will not allow the water to get that high. So it's, it's a, it's a maintenance-free safety, safety mechanism that doesn't allow water to siphon out and backfeed the system. So this is, this shows an aerial view of the new pipe that was installed as part of the project. So if you follow the blue dots and connected the dots, that's the existing system. And then the, the red solid line is the one mile of pipe that was brought over to the Behringer property. So we've had these, we've had several long-term customers. Chimney Rock has been a customer since 1977 when it was an 18-hole golf course. It later kind of realized the burgeoning wine region and found that, that they downsized to a nine-hole and then eventually turned it all into, into vineyard. Clotevall, Stags Leap and-
What can I see?
They, they've been since only 2003, but they're proud like we are of it. They're not required to, you know, post that the vineyards are irrigated with recycled water, but they're proud of it and they're spreading the word for us on their own. And next. So near the end of the project, we found that with some good planning ahead of time, we were able to utilize what was left in the contingency fund for this project to move forward with a CIP project that we already had on the books. We had been looking at the existing digester system at the plant that was built in 1939. And there had been several upgrades, modifications to the treatment processes and thereby we're making more sludge, but we're using the same, same digester. So we looked at the potential of building a new digester to the tune of $5 to $7 million and wanted to look at different methods of thickening, removing water from the sludge so that we could increase the residence time. And this product, this, this unit, the DAFT, DAFT unit, dissolved air flotation thickener that you may have heard about in the weekly blurb, that's it. That's the, that's the, the fuzzy filter's now old news. This is the new, the new favorite toy besides SCADA. So the project timeline, after interviewing several firms through the RFP process, we chose GHD and got into contract with them in May of 2011. In August 2011, we held initial stakeholder meeting where we invited the existing and potentially new customers to tell them the story, to gauge interest in the, in the project. Final, so, so from 2011 to 2014, we spent all that time working on the scope of the project and, and several iterations of plans and specs until we felt that we had what we, what we wanted. So shortly thereafter, this is when things started really moving, we held a mandatory pre-bid meeting in February of the same year, opened bids the very next month, and then in April granted a notice to proceed. And then like two days later, we had a groundbreaking ceremony that was well-attended. Several dignitaries, including Mike Thompson, came and, and spoke. And I think most of the council was, was present as well as town staff. And it was a surprisingly good, good turnout for a wastewater project.
Yeah. Roberta Gonzalez from Channel 5 came through.
Right, yeah, that's right, exactly. So very, very exciting. Yeah. So after that, construction continued through August 2015 and brings us to, to today where we have a, a final, final product. So just a rundown of the, of the total costs. The, the final costs were just above $4 million, of which the town and the veterans homes split the costs evenly. Of that $4 million, $2.3 million was paid to Gelati Construction and their subcontractors for construction and materials. $875,000 was spent on design of the project before and during, during construction. $310,000 approximately was used for the construction management services and the remaining $557,000 was spent on a multitude of permits, studies, geotechnical work, additional engineering services, and membership to the Western Recycled Water Coalition. And that concludes the presentation.
Great, well, it's great to see what we've been seeing for years in the blurb actually turn into something real.
Take a look at it, yeah.
Rather than just a bullet point. So that's awesome. Congratulations on that. Questions or comments from council, Councilwoman Doreen Becker?
Yes, Don, I remember when we were going to have the groundbreaking, we talked about recycling 100% of the wastewater. Are we going to be able to do that?
Well, that's all going to be dependent on rainfall and, you know, soil conditions. There's a lot that goes, goes into that. But I think we could very well, we're, we're trying to do that. That's, you know, we're, we're considered a, an intermittent discharger, so we have to meet several requirements to discharge to the Napa River. We are fully permitted and allowed to discharge to the river, but there are various, we have to meet a 45 to 1 dilution ratio. And our new permit is written so that the water has to be coming in faster than we can pump it out or the storage ponds have to be at their capacity. So we have plenty of room right now, but with El Nino predictions, we're just going to have to wait and see. But I wouldn't be surprised if, if we did in some time recycle 100%.
Have you been, have you been approached by any other wineries who are interested in purchasing the water?
We have. And some are, are too far north or too far south that we couldn't physically get the water to them. And right now, we don't want to bite off more than we can chew and, and, you know, promise something that we can't deliver, so.
I understand, thank you.
Just on that point, I also want to remind everybody that this is, you know, Don showed a picture that some of the folks are promoting, that is a vineyard irrigated. We started in this business when people were very reluctant to take the water and were quote, "doing us a favor." Unfortunately, the business deal points have continued to build on that. So any further expansion of our system would need to be on a very different economic model, more similar to what Napa San is doing. Right now, our recycled water users are heavily subsidized by our utility ratepayers. And I won't say that in a negative point because we have an obligation to responsibly do something with our discharge. So this was the method. Many of you may not recall, but where the golf course actually is now used to be a hayfield and that was how the town, fairly traditional model. So for us to expand further, I would certainly want to make sure that it's done at a cost-benefit ratio. I will also share that Don and I found that hell hath no furry like a potential vintner that doesn't necessarily want to share the water because we are providing 100% in the summer. Our challenge is an environment right now, if, you know, we get towards the end of winter, the ponds are full, we actually produce a fair amount of project on a, product on a fairly consistent basis. So that's the, the gap is going to be our peak season, rainy season, where, you know, if the storage ponds are full, we're full, then it's going into the river. But if it's not, then we're going to try to, so we are doing something more so than most other communities when it comes to a various, you know, this is part of our sustainable theme as well. I mean, we are doing some very positive things and it has a cost to our ratepayer comparatively.
Yes, and the question is kind of spot on and I know you addressed it in the way you, you have to because we have this, you know, we have this excess product that we're producing. We can't always necessarily give it to someone who can't take it.
Right.
But I, I first of all want to thank you and I think the town in general, and we should commend ourselves on having taken on such an important effort. You know, everyone, everyone in this community should be proud of this because we have the ability and the capacity to literally reclaim everything that we're producing through the community and reuse it. And that's something that we've all been responsible for, so, you know, kudos to the whole town.
Other questions or comments? So, Don, do you happen to know what a, what an average percentage would be? You mentioned that in 2015, we were all the way up to 87, which is- You mentioned that in 2015, we were all the way up to 87, which is remarkable. Just generally speaking, I know there are a lot of factors that play into that, but...
About 60% is from numbers that I have going back to actually 2004. So about 60%. These last couple of years have been extra high.
But it's an amazing percentage to be able to recycle.
Absolutely, and it's, it's due in part to, to the, you know, these projects that we're, that we're doing and, and the, you know, the additional users that are coming onboard. Like I said, when, when I first started with the town, we kind of did this rain dance to try to get it to rain so we could discharge, because there just was nothing else we could do with it. We were just busting at the seams with water. We're, we're begging the people to use it so we could go pump it back to them. And then we'd have a rain dance to make it stop so that we could put water back in, so they'd start using it, so we could put water back into the pond. So with the addition of Mondavi in 2009, it was an unusually dry winter, and we had been used to discharging in around December, maybe, maybe early January would, would kind of be the latest we'd ever gone. We didn't, we didn't discharge till Valentine's Day in 2009, and that was a whole nother month that we had to figure out what to do with the water. We got a call from some folks at Mondavi and said, "Hey, we understand that there's a pipeline running through our property that delivers recycled water out to Silverado Trail. Is there any way we can get some of that water?" And I said, "Man, do you have some pipe? We can, I'll show you right where we can hook on." And met with Steve, and, and that doubled our capacity just, just immediately.
And Steve alluded to it, I think, I don't remember if you did or not, but just to recognize the partnerships that we do have because they aren't all obligated, especially certain times of the year, to be taking what they take, and so they are being good stewards and good partners with us.
Absolutely.
So I just want to recognize that too, because that's been, that was a challenge when we had a hard time finding, you know, destinations for that water.
Right, right, right. So the idea is they, they use it down all summer, we fill them up all winter, and it, it seems to be working.
Yeah, absolutely.
It was one thing.
Yes.
So you didn't mention the methane recapture, which is also a wonderful advantage that cuts down our greenhouse gases. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And then what about the photovoltaic? What's the, the status?
I can answer that. So we are meeting with the seed program administrator. That program has had some challenges for the past year trying to put together some financing and some other challenges. We are in the process of reviewing some of the documents they're now providing. We're hopeful that they're going to meet the original agreement and the numbers that they committed to, and we will hopefully be back in the near future with a report about moving forward with that project. So we're still trying to get it going.
Okay, thank you.
The timing is good for us also. Steve, we want to make sure that we include this 80% number in our presentation to the Napa County League of Governments next week, along with all the others.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven.
Very good.
Eighty-seven. That'll get the Public Works Director's attention.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, just to kind of put an exclamation point on that, Don alluded to the NPDES permit, that is a five-year permit. We just finished negotiating, because that's really what it is, a negotiation with the state for the new permit, and two things became clear. The vision and the commitment to continue to manage our recycled water program and to add customers and be able to use that water for something besides dumping in the river is, is now becoming clear to everyone. It's, it's a much more valuable resource even, even beyond what they thought of in 1977. One of the things that the permit people asked us was, could we help Santa Elena realize, or other communities realize what benefit this was for us and, and how we now have customers asking us to be added to the system? So we can't provide any more water to anyone because of the commitments we have to the current customers. Even if we wanted, if we had a customer that was nearby, it would be tough for us to add that additional customer. We just don't have the capacity. We're in a really great space right now to be able to give all the water that we make to the current customers that we have. So I think it's a, an amazing system that has really proven benefits beyond what the original people who thought of it in 1977 thought it would ever do, so kudos to them and to all of you all for continuing that.
One last question related to that, either Joe or Don. I know we've talked about this in the past, but maybe it's worth mentioning again about why aren't we using this recycled water in our parks and throughout town? Maybe you could just tell that, give that answer again?
Yeah, during, during the planning process from, you know, 2011 to 2014, we, we looked at that, and one of the major reasons was that we didn't want to become our own customers' competition for the water. The time that we would be irrigating, you know, a large expansive area of grass, say for instance, Veterans Park is, is really the, the one that would fit that the best is it's just in close proximity to the pipeline. You know, that grapes take, you know, just, just the drips, you know, drip system. Now, they're irrigating 300 acres, but, you know, turf takes a lot more water, and when the, when our customers want the water, so do we. So we use, we would use a lot of water and, and be taking from the, from the customers and the whole idea. And we just don't have the infrastructure either. We can't, we supply water and we put it in an impoundment or a pond, and then the customer irrigates out of it. It's not like a drinking water distribution system where it's always pressurized and we could just have the sprinklers come on at our leisure. We'd probably have to have some, some booster pump or a tank or some other mechanism to, to have a pressurized system. So it just, it just didn't pencil out at that time, so.
Well, it's an economic and it's a physical infrastructure deficiency or incapability.
Right.
To kind of expand a little on what Don is saying, first of all, we would only use the water in a small period of time, and I want you to re, to go visualize what Don showed you, holding ponds, ponds with depth. We would have a very high expense to bring a system to our three largest turf parks. We use, they're large for Yountville, they're not large actually in the amount of volume. So when, when we talked about the premise, the premise is we needed storage capacity and volume. Our parks are not high volume. They would come to us though with a very high price tag to bring it. So when you put it all together, it really did not pencil out and still doesn't pencil out for the, the infrastructure cost. So that's why our parks program, we're spending more time on re-landscaping, new irrigation controllers, new systems, and doing more appropriate landscaping like we set the stage. You know, it'd be nice if we had like a large ball complex. If you're familiar with Kennedy Park in Napa, that probably, if, if we were looking at it and going, hmm, we want to do something, that would probably have the size to, to help us. But we'd have a several hundred thousand dollar expense to get to these three parks offset a $25,000 water bill.
No, and we've talked about that for, as you said, for several years and why it doesn't make sense, but I just wanted to, to touch back on that because it's timely with your report, so.
Sure.
Appreciate it very much. And again, great news. We've, we've set the bar very high for our last program update because we've had all very positive news from our reports, so.
I want to keep that going.
Please, on behalf of the entire council, share our thanks and kudos to the entire team that helped put this all together and make it so successful.
Will too. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just keep that tablet charged at all times.
Absolutely.
Let's, let's move on to our last program update, the capital improvement program.
This is a, it's going to be quick. I, I promised a quick, a quick capital improvement program update. We're, we're down at just 100 slides or so, so.
Choking.
So tonight, I want to discuss our capital improvement program. I think this is a good time for us to update where we're at. I think, not to put too fine a point on it, but this time last year, I think I was one month in my job, maybe two months into this position. We were almost the exact reverse of where we are this evening. I think we have 50 projects on the list. Thirty-six are either complete or underway of the remaining 14 projects. The majority of those are replacement funds. So while they're in the CIP, they're not really a project per se. They're funding for replacement of the parts and pieces that are at some time going to wear out and need to be replaced. So I think we're doing rather well. So getting into the, to the nuts and bolts of, of this presentation for this evening, the Corp Yard renovations, CF009. This bid is scheduled to close this Friday. We're looking at an engineer's estimate of around $175,000. We, we're hopeful that it's going to come in close to that, and we will get this underway as quick as we can. We'll get it back to the council, the first, the first meeting in January, I think, or February is when we're scheduled to come back to council for work. So that's exciting. It's 1977 was the original date of that building, so it's well, it's, it's in need of upgrade. The GIS mapping improvements. This again has been one of those projects that has gone on for a couple of years now. I'm happy to say that this year, we're actually going to see a rollout of, we can actually have a piece of the, of the program that we're going to be able to use. So we are waiting on Apple to go through their process. It takes them an awful long time to, to approve anything that gets onto the Apple Store. So once they have, we've satisfied their requirements and they've played with it a little bit and, and are satisfied that it's not going to be some nefarious scheme to work into the Apple system, we'll turn it live and we will have MyVille as a live app with lots of maps, features, some of the history of Yountville, lots and lots of stuff on there, including an application to help people in town, citizens and others who have the app to report things they see that may need to repair or replacement or something, some other kind of, of an issue. Next up is the Oak Circle Open Space. That project broke ground Monday, yesterday. So that crew is out of the upper northeast part of the state. This weather is not really bothering them at all. They're getting right after it and cutting down trees and setting up their stormwater protection. They got some orange fencing up, and we expect this project to be complete by spring, well before spring. It's going to include some parking, additional parking, head-in parking. It's going to be a contemplative space with some native and drought-tolerant species, and it's going to really put a nice kind of a accent on that end of the, of the trail, and it's going to be some, the starting place for a new piece of infrastructure that we're going to work on this year and continue on in the next year. We're replacing the decking surfaces on all the pedestrian bridges, so anyone who walks around town has seen some of the bridges and the decking is a wearable item and it's reached its service life. So that is supposed to be, the bids are supposed to be back this Friday, and we expect to get those underway within the next two weeks. So the decking on the bridges should be complete by the end of February, early March. Hopper Creek Flood Control Project. So this is the, the project that is probably, we've all discussed every council meeting. It is about to get underway as soon as the weather breaks. We've been struggling with finding a soil dump. The soil dump that we had originally thought we were going to use is no longer available because of the weather. 3,000 cubic yards, sounds like an awful lot of dirt. Turns out, it's not much for people who use dirt, so they were reluctant to take only 3,000 yards. We found a place finally. The lab results are supposed to be back tomorrow, and we should be, as soon as the weather breaks, getting ready to break ground finally on Finnel and start putting pipe in the ground. So we're expecting that project to be complete by the end of February, weather permitting.
Just to point out, the PG&E has finally resolved their, their conflicts. They have a few cleanup things not related to our project that they have to do, but we should look forward to the full benefit of the project, albeit a few months later than we had anticipated.
Right. To not, to kind of not beat a dead horse, and town managers kind of pointed that out. Most of the plates that you have seen on Vista and Vineyard Circle are gone. That is an indication that PG is in fact, PG&E is in fact done, and now the contractor can get underway. So we apologize for all of this other infrastructure stuff that's going on, but it was a part of the process, and now we can actually get done, get going with the, with the full-blown project. Velagio Channel Bank Repair.
They could just come in, Joe, and actually get rid of the paint striping that they, in some cases.
We will have them do that as a part of our permit process, so absolutely, we'll have them remove that. And we, we're working on that now, as a matter of fact, down on Forester and Vista.
And I'm sure that the trenches, I just want to reemphasize, you've heard me mention it outside this room on many occasions, if they're delayed in this construction and those trenches continue to sink due to the weather, which is keeping them from working, I want to make sure that we stay on them to make sure that they fill those to a safe level.
Absolutely. We've been working with the Intergovernmental Affairs Ombudsman, Mark Van Gorder, and he seems to have an inside track to help those gentlemen get out here on a timely basis. So rest assured, we're looking at that and making sure that those trenches are being well taken care of as we move forward.
Thank you.
Velagio Channel Bank Repair, that's, this is a part of the Hopper Creek project as well. That is 100% complete. So I think the most noticeable thing, other than the fact that those willows are sprouting like weeds, is that there aren't tulies in the ditch. So Velagio was quite happy about that. It's been something that they've been struggling to try to have removed, and this project was able to help accomplish that and, and manage that bank repair as well, so. This, this slide is from the gardens at French Laundry. So I think what you should note on this piece of the Hopper Creek project is, is that the bank now, as they call it Anglo Repose, it's really laying much flatter than it had been prior to the, to the restoration. In years past, I think we've mentioned that they would have used concrete and other hardened surfaces to, to do this kind of work. The more modern method is to use benching, sloping, and, and grass and vegetated lifts to accomplish the same thing. So once these willows start growing back in, it's going to be a really beautiful kind of a slope that is going to hold its space, not deposit the soil back into the stream and help us maintain the downstream section a little bit simpler and with, a little less often, hopefully. Flood Wall Earthquake Repair. So this is a, this is a scene of how high the water can get when, when the Napa River actually floods. So we're hoping not to see this during this El Nino season, but if we do, we should rest assured that the wall is going to be doing what it's designed to do, and, and when the weather breaks, we're going to get the contractor onsite and, and get them repairing the wall. We're having a pre-job meeting Monday, next Monday, and the contractor will be getting assembled and getting ready to go to work as soon as the weather breaks. So we would expect them to be onsite, certainly by the end of Feb, by the end of January, weather permitting. Pedestrian Path from Oak Circle to Mission. So this is that part of the project that I was talking about earlier. It includes a bridge over what is now going to be the new park at Oak Circle. It's going to land in the ad hoc, what is now the ad hoc addendum yard, and then we're going to incre, install a piece of path that's now then going to connect to Mission. So it's going to go from addendum behind the bank and then complete that whole pass system basically from the north end of town to south end of town. This was funded by grant funding, so this year was scheduled for design and permitting. Next year, we're going to be doing some more design and permitting and then installation the following year. So we're looking forward to getting this path and bridge system installed. PK005 is Smart Weather Stations for Irrigation. So we looked at several types of weather stations for our irrigation controllers. We had one vendor come and offer us an opportunity to try one of their controllers free. Turns out, it works really well. We can use it with our iPads, we can use it with our iPhones. Our, our staff can operate that controller remotely, much like Don can operate his plant. They can see what's going on. We, we installed a device so that if there is a sprinkler head that's broken, it alerts our staff, and we can turn that irrigation controller off to stop the water from leaking even though we're not at the park. It's a pretty amazing product. And, and we're taking advantage of the, both the iPad technology and the technology that now is available with these high- now is available with these type of irrigation controllers. So, the next park that's going to get it is Oak Circle, the new park, and we're going to start rolling these out to all the other parks as quickly as we can get them online. Irrigation Drip System. So, we did convert the mount path to drip irrigation. We did that in-house with our own staff. We're also using California Conservation Corps Grant Program. We applied for that and we're awarded, the California Conservation Corps is going to come out and help us convert both Washington Square, that's the area between Yount and Forester, a piece of Vineyard Park, that little strip that goes between the Toyon Terrace Neighborhood and there's a piece that's small there, and several other pieces into drip irrigation. So, they're going to help us remove the turf, install drip irrigation and then install drought tolerant landscaping. We're going to use it as a demonstration garden for other people in town who may want to do that and aren't quite sure what they can do. So, we're going to put up some signs and let them know what kind of plants they are and kind of use it as a way to advertise what's available and what you can do with drought tolerant landscape and how colorful and really what a nice addition it can be. It doesn't have to be, you know, just succulents. There's a lot of choices with drought tolerant landscape. Yountville Community Park Improvement. So, happy to get this one underway. The elm trees are down. I think the park looks, is going to look great. I think we're actually issuing a notice to proceed on January 11th. The contractor knows that they have to finish before the Easter weekend so that we can have the Easter egg hunt there. We're looking forward to getting that project underway and to see what it's going to look like when it's done, once the Easter egg hunt comes. So, we've committed to Sam and the Parks and Rec staff that we're going to be ready to go and we're going to do everything we can to get there. Surveys and Monuments Book. So, this is something that, that doesn't, on face value, it's hard to see what we're trying to do, but when some, a developer or somebody who's doing some work on property lines or needs some kind of a monument to use so that they can do some staking for properties, we didn't have the ability to give them that kind of information. So, they've been working on this for a few years. This continues that project. So, we're installing and re-establishing monuments and recording those so that the surveyors can use that information in a more simple fashion. It's probably something we're going to be able to use on our GIS at some point in time so people, they'll have access to that information and be able to get it done in a more quick fashion and be much more efficient. The Bucket Truck. So, we talked about the need for a bucket truck and we, and part of that need was for safety, part of it was also for efficiency. We suspected that we would be able to use it in ways that we hadn't even imagined and we definitely are being able to use that truck. Guys are not getting up on ladders or they're able to look at things like the Christmas lights and some of the decorations that we put up at Christmas and our own streetlights. So, I think for $29,000, that was a pretty good bargain. That was all in and the truck has really performed pretty well so far. So, I think it was a good addition to our fleet and we're really happy we got it. The Flight Pump. So, this is part of the wastewater treatment plant. Don, we talked about this early on in our CIP process. He had a couple of flight pumps that were in use. He had an older flight pump that was on its last legs. What we want is the two that are in service to be able to be used while they're, when they're needed and then to have a backup in case one of those two fails. So, that's what we have is, we have three good pumps, two of which are in service all the time, and one of which we have as a spare in case one of those two goes down. This is one that's near and dear to our mayor's heart, the pressure pit upgrade at Fennel and Yount. I think that it's important to note a few different things. Number one, originally this project was well over $100,000. Working with some consultants, with our deputy director, Debbie Height, and staff from the Water Department, Don Moore and Nick Hickman, we got this infrastructure up out of the ground. It satisfied the Department of Water Resources who was concerned that our infrastructure was kind of at risk because it was always in jeopardy of being submerged. It gave our staff a much safer place to work from, no confined space entry, and it came at about a fourth of what the original estimate was. So, we are hopeful that the plants that we had planted are going to grow in and actually screen that structure off. And it's going to take a couple of months, but we're hopeful that by spring, certainly by summer, that will be just a, hey, what's over there? And the mayor and the rest of the people who walk by will be quite satisfied with what they see.
Maybe we can have Samantha add that to the scope of work for the muralist.
But, nice job on the landscaping posts. Good call.
Thank you. We thought that was a great reuse. Essentially, Larry Hancock, Arnie Munyop's supervisor, thought that would be a great reuse of those posts and we're going to try to do that in several other places. So, look for those posts to be appearing at other areas around town. Fixed Network Meter Reading Project. We are currently trying to negotiate some of the contract details with the, with the manufacturer. And once we get those details ironed out, we are ready to purchase the meter, the meters that will allow both our customers and our staff the ability to look at their water meter, see what their water usage is, get some reports off it. It's really nifty, it's easy to use, and we're hoping that it's going to be something that both the customer and our staff will find helps make us all a bit more efficient and mindful of the kind of waters we're using and how we use it. The last two slides are some of the programs that I talked about earlier, some of which are replacement funds. I think a few of them are notable. The pavement treatment for paths and parking lots, CP 7016. We're actually going to use that this year to pave the path that goes beside the cemetery at the end of town there between Jefferson and Yount. That path is pretty beat up and we thought we could resurface it, but for the kind of, we found a contractor to work with, they gave us a pretty good price. We're actually going to tear that piece of asphalt out, replace it with brand-new path and backing and have something that's going to last probably the better part of 25 years. So, we're looking forward to getting that underway here within the next week or so. We just let that contract. Townwide Drainage and Erosion Improvements. So, what we're going to use that fund for is part of our stormwater, our new Phase 2 stormwater requirements require us to either fully capture our trash or have a program in place that monitors our trash that is into our stormwater system and figure out a way to have it removed from the system. So, we're going to install full trash capture devices. They gave us 10 years to implement this program, so we're going to start out with four or five in the worst spots, see how they work, see how these devices kind of manage to get better as time goes on and take advantage of maybe some additional grants or increases in that technology to help us better capture that trash. So, that's what we're using that fund for this year. Hopper Creek Sediment Removal. Earlier this year, you all approved an MOU with the county flood control and they are actually now securing the permits and doing the work in Hopper Creek that we previously had tried to do and were unsuccessful. So, we're happy that they're able to do that. They're really happy to have that work. We think it's going to be a great partnership. As a matter of fact, we've also kind of helped Velagio get on with the county flood control as well, so it looks like they might help them with the Velagio channel too. So, it's a really great partnership. It shows really good collaboration between both the public and private side, and I think it's a great way to help reduce everyone's kind of cost and frustration with trying to obtain those permits. The last page, the top of the page, pavement management program. So, what we use that for this year was the Moreau and Adams Reconstruct. When we went to, when we asked you to award this earlier this year, one of the things that I mentioned was that I didn't think that road would last through this winter, especially the one going into the park. I think what you see now is a road that's going to be around for the better part of 25 years or longer, depending on the usage of that road. I think it's probably going to last much longer than that. So, we have two nice pieces of road. We got two paving projects done this year, which is unusual for us, and I think it worked well. The timing just worked out well for us to be able to do that. Streetlight Replacement Program. So, well, I think what's notable about this program is we have struggled with our streetlight vendor. They have, we've ordered several rounds of lights. Some of them haven't really met the standard that we needed to install on Washington Street. So, we negotiated those lights for a really good deal rather than send them back to the manufacturer. So, as a side benefit from that seeming delay, it looks like the Oak Circle neighborhood is going to get most of their wood post streetlights replaced with the town standard streetlight. And it's not all of them, but it'll be a large majority. You'll also see the streetlights that are going to go up on Fennel to replace some of those aggregate streetlights that are the old town standard. And you'll see a couple of other additions to streetlights as time and resources allow. So, we're using that money to do it in-house. We think we can do those streetlights with our in-town staff and it's going to be a couple, two or three at a time. We're waiting on PG&E right now to give us a map of the system so that we know how to shut it off and then get it re-energized when we need to get the streetlight back on. The last thing on the list is the hydrant and main flushing program. So, that was the no-des program. So, I think what's, what we really want to take away from that program was that we brought in a new vendor. The typical way to do that is open a hydrant and let the water flow down the gutter. We found a vendor that was able to clean the water, polish and filter and take some samples and actually turn back a cleaner product than we brought in. So, they stayed a couple of days longer than we had anticipated because the system was a little dirtier than we had anticipated. There was still a little bit of sand left, not nearly as much as we thought there might be. But, the end result is a really clean water system. We managed to do it for about $15,000 under budget, so that was another good thing. And we're going to have them back next year to do the same thing. It's going to be a little bit less because they know now what our system needs. They're going to be here a few days less because now the system is much cleaner. And then after that, it'll be every couple, two or three years, so we won't have to do it every year. I think one of the other things that we learned as we were operating that system and opening and closing valves is that we didn't fully capture every valve that we had and didn't, really our maps didn't capture all the valves that we had. So, this process allowed us to find some of those missing pieces, put them into GIS. So, now, we have a complete picture of our system. We know where every valve's at. We've exercised them all and we're ready to go. So, I think it was a really great program. I think it, especially during a drought season, was able to help us save some water, put clean water back into the system and we're ready to go for next year. Any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks very much, Joe. Questions, comments? Councilmember Dornbecker.
Yes. Joe, on page 14 on the surveys and monument book photo, are all those little green dots monuments? What are, will you give me a little better? I don't understand.
Yeah, I would assume that those are monuments. Yep.
What does that mean?
So...
It's how they measure where your property line is dictated.
Yeah, it's just something permanent that you've been surveying.
Little plaque.
Yeah, that's mounted.
Debbie's going to give us the answer.
Yeah, let's hear it.
Let's hear the official answer.
Well, here from our deputy director, Debbie Height.
It's the monuments, centerline monuments that surveyors set. They look like a, they look like, the top of it looks like a water valve in the street and you open it up and there's a, there's a, there's a post in the middle with, and a cap with a very tiny hole in it. And the surveyor puts a pointed rod onto it and they have an exact position of that centerline and on a coordinate. You...
So, that's the lot lines?
Yeah, it tells you where you are on the world.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, the new method is GIS. It's not, it's not accurate enough for surveyors in general. They need minutes and seconds, hours, so they're much more finite in their measurement when you're talking about lot lines and, so for them, at this point in time, it's one of the things they need to be able to do their work.
I see. Thank you. I was just confused.
Thank you, Debbie.
Well, I'm glad that we got Debbie in because we had everyone else that sat through all of these presentations. I just want to commend not just Joe and Don, but all of our team for the kind of investments that we've made in the community. All of what you've been telling us tonight, that's the way I see it. I think we might all agree with that, that, you know, sometimes we hear from folks about where are we investing our money and is it going to the residents? Well, you've just heard a couple hours worth, at least an hour worth of significant investment in infrastructure, in operations, in avoiding or reducing future problems and risks. And it's been, I think, a great presentation to show how much we are doing and how much we are investing in our town, so.
$6.55 million, according to this list.
Right.
That's just the upcoming year.
That's just, yeah.
For the most part, managed by in-house staff, which again, was something that's a little bit different than what had been done in years past. We've added some staff, added some skills that we didn't have in-house and now we're able to manage a lot more, the greater percentage of that work in-house, so.
Well, that's because you're always just sitting at your desk with your laptop now, just monitoring everything.
Right.
For every hour you should spend, you're spending two minutes. We can get more work out of you, more and more.
Twenty-four hours a day.
Really great, great message to present and to share with the community, so kudos to all of you.
Thank you.
And kudos to the fact that we have no public hearings tonight. So, we'll move on to administrative regular items. I don't see any, so we're going to keep rolling right along. To staff, we have a couple of additional staff informational reports. First one, a little more information about the Hopper Creek project update.
Right. So, we talked a little bit about that during the CIP. Real quick, the Hopper Creek at Fennel Road, I think what the most notable thing you'll see is the weir structure. The guardrail's been installed. It looks really nice. It matches the bridge. The fence has been complete along the bank of the creek there and behind the homeowner's house. They finally have poured the sidewalk at Oak Circle and Heather. It took them a while to get to it, but it really looks nice. The landscaping is almost complete as well. So, I think that's also going to be a nice feature once it matures and grows in a bit, certainly by the spring. Those leaves will start to bloom and it's going to be a really nice counterpoint to the park across the street. We're also considering installing some additional fencing along the top of that creek bank. We have heard some comments. We agree that it could probably use some fencing. It's probably going to be similar to what you have seen at Hopper Creek and other areas in town, which is a decorative fence with some wire mesh, welded wire mesh installed. So, it's kind of going to get to be a living fence, actually. Some bushes will grow on it and after a couple of years, it probably won't look much like a fence. But initially, it's a really nice addition because it's, it'll be a lower fence, you'll be able to see through it, but it'll still provide the protection and safety that we think is probably needed for that area with that bank drop-off the way it is.
Quick question about the Fennel Bridge area and that weir. Prior to all this rain, when there was some rain, there's water that puddles in the weir. Will that change when the pipes are actually installed? Because it appears that there's depth to that. I'm just wondering, you know, if we were to get our mosquito abatement representative in here, it seems like it's a collection area that could cause issues with that. Is there something that's done to mitigate that?
It will drain a little, but there probably will be some water holding in that area, especially at this time of year, and it may get on mosquito abatement's list for some kind of treatment. It's not going to be much, but any, it seems like any little bit of water is a concern for them and rightly so. There's not much we can do in that area because it's such a flat slope between Hopper Creek and where it outfalls at Beard Ditch. There's not an awful lot of fall between those two, not a lot of elevation difference between those two infall and the outfall. So, it's just one of those unfortunate circumstances that we're going to have to kind of watch and monitor and...
And I think it's also the little collection pool areas where we dredge down a little lower to collect the debris, that also takes longer to... lower to collect the debris. That also takes longer to drain and therefore we're having that issue too.
Yeah, the sedimentation basins are certainly that way. I would imagine that those will drain down pretty quick, and while you didn't probably notice it because of the grass and vegetation that was growing along Hopper Creek, it was probably similar in many stretches of Hopper Creek as well. I mean, it was probably a marshy. I know that Vice Mayor Hall has made that trip across that ditch at Beard Ditch into the vineyard and probably got wet feet a couple times chasing the younger halls around, so it does happen. For the most part, vector control is aware, and it's just something we're going to have to monitor and kind of keep on the radar.
Okay. Any more to that update?
That'll do it.
All right. Water conservation update.
All right, another good news. So, happy to say that for the year-end, at least for this running year-end, we were at 28.15% of savings. So, that's an amazing number. It is, it is winter time and we would expect it to be a lot lower. And the 2013 year again is, is the, is the number that we measure the difference by. That's the benchmark that the state sent, set. So, and I would like to say that for the, for the total overall, we have a 27.77% reduction in water use. So, a much bigger number than we had set out to achieve, and it's thanks to the, to all the people in town who are turning off their sprinklers when it's raining, who are following the two-day-a-week watering routine that we now have, who aren't over-watering and letting it run down into their gutters and across the sidewalks. I mean, all those things are things that we saw early on. You just, we don't see it nearly as much, even, even when the weather's nice and you would expect to see some sprinklers running. We don't see those same kind of violations. So, this number kind of proves what we have suspected would happen, which is that our numbers would come back towards us in a, in a very positive way, and that 27.77% is a really good sign that we're on the right track. I also provided you some additional information. Councilmember Dornbacher has asked us on several occasions to provide some information about how much water we use and how do we, how do we compare that water use, for instance, between the residents, the hotels, some of the businesses. So, we provided that same July to December time period. I think what pops out for me when I read this is if you look at September, in the September usage area, the in-town residential was about 5,500 gallons plus or minus. Restaurants and bars, about 1,400 gallons. Hotels and inns, around 3,000 gallons, 2,200. And then you look at the December usage, we're 50% less usage in December. Now, you would think that that's, would be true because the weather has definitely gone our way and is causing that reduction in usage, but the numbers are still kind of holding true, right? So, you see that residential use is by far the bigger user, 2,200 gallons. And then on down the list from there, of course, hotels and inns, a little, it's not quite the same amount of reduction, but they're having probably just a few less customers, and that's why I think that number might be a little bit different, but not substantially different.
The other thing you need to do when you're looking at this chart, you also need to realize that you have four categories that combine in-town residential use, because we break it down. For example, you have in-town residential, which is most of us, single-family, condominiums, multi-residential, and the mobile home. So, all of those uses combined are what would be considered residential use, but it just segments because, for example, a mobile home park owner or a condominium owner does not necessarily have as much capacity to reduce water use by landscape modification, for example. So, it's a good segment, but when people think that our hotels and our restaurants use so much more, no. Those of us that live here are really the biggest users by and far.
By, by a long shot. So, I thought, I thought that was good information. Thank you for asking for that, and it definitely helps us realize who are our bigger users. And I think it's also, we should note that the outside-town use, which is our outside customers, outside-the-town customers, are also not an insignificant number considering there's not an awful lot of people on that line. It's in the neighborhood of 600 gallons, right, residential outside? So, that number that you see about halfway down the list.
Oh, I see.
What I would say, echo what Joe is saying there, is our 37 outside-use customers use a considerably greater proportion of water than the average in-town residential, and that's something we are, we have, we have separate tracking and we're monitoring that differently because that's something we may have to further restrict.
Happy to answer any questions you might have about the water usage or any part of the water conservation program that we have.
I did want to ask a quick question about December if I may.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I was asking the mayor. So, if I recall correctly, last December was probably one of the greatest Decembers on record for rain in Napa County, and it is remarkable to me, although my eyes aren't nearly as good as I think they are, it looks like last year we used 28.13 acre feet versus this year, 27.49, even having less rain. So, we're actually down year-over-year 2.28%. Am I reading that correctly from here?
Correct.
So, I would, again, like to just applaud the community in conserving water because last year in December, it was, it was like a deluge and it just stopped. But it's remarkable that just a little bit of communication and effort and...
The other, and I just use this as a fun observation anecdotal one, but if you look, the other thing that's curious about September, clearly September is a busy time in Yountville because our overall usage went up slightly above July and August and then came down a little. So, it's just an interesting, you know, it's consistently in all use categories up, so obviously there is more going on here, more whatever. All of us are here at the same time, but just an interesting little observation when you look at facts.
Yeah. Well, it's a seasonal pattern. Yeah, it's a seasonal pattern too.
All right. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to turn your microphone off now, Joe.
Sweet.
Talking more tonight than I am.
Sorry.
No, you just had a bunch of different reports to update. Thank you. And you met the criteria of continuing to give us positive information too, so that's great.
I follow directions well.
Council meeting reports, comments, agenda items. We have no flood control meeting to report on. I'll just very quickly mention, I spent the day down at the Board of Supervisors meeting two significant topics today. One was additional discussion by the board on the ag protection advisory committee recommendations. They forwarded to the staff direction on many of those recommendations, so if you are interested in what they decided, look for that in the media. But there are a number of recommendations that I think are going to be impactful in the future for winery growth, winery development, and ag protection. Also, they discussed the Vine Trail, and it's interesting to see as the Vine Trail continues to evolve, how, how much more challenging it is for them to find routes along the 44 miles that they anticipate that are acceptable to everyone, including the property owners and the neighbors to the, especially, today was a significant bit of feedback from people that live in two in particular areas that are proposed to divert from the Highway 29 or the Wine Train right-of-way. In particular, just north of Madison, the proposal is to go from our Yountville mile back to the west side of Highway 29, but then along Service Road area and immediately adjacent to Dominus and some other vineyards on that side as it gets up to the Brix Mustards area, and there's some concern about adding a pedestrian bike and potentially equestrian trail that close to agricultural production and private property. Very similar concerns were expressed up in the north end of the valley on Ellers Lane and Lodi Lane where because of right-of-way limitations along Highway 29 and some property owners refusing to allow the trail to go on their property, they're having difficulty finding alternative route areas, and there were a significant number of property owners that were opposed to the idea that they have proposed now. So, it'll be interesting to see what, you know, the answer tends to be, oh, we'll work that out. And people are saying, no, you should work it out now before you tell us that you want to, you know, impact our residential or our business livelihood. So, more to come on that for sure, but those were two fairly interesting, albeit lengthy, discussions today at the Board of Supervisors. And Supervisor Pedrosa rotated to the new chair of the board meetings. Yeah, Councilmember Dornbecker.
Well, I just wanted to ask, did they address the new ordinance about events in the valley at this supervisor's meeting today?
They, they did not directly talk about it. They, they directed staff to consider a future item on visitation and some of the other impacts that were mentioned in the recommendations from APAC, but not specifically about events. I'm glad you mentioned that even though it has nothing to do with what I forgot. The other item they talked about was plastic bags and the fact that they are moving forward with an ordinance language to restrict, very similar to all the other jurisdictions. They did call out, Town of Yountville is the only other jurisdiction that does not have one on the books. I got up and told them that we would be talking about it in the very near future, but they were addressing specialty bags, what some people were trying to pull off as multi-use, which was just basically a different color plastic bag than the white plastic bag. They're trying to call it a specialty bag or a reuse bag. So, I think each of these ordinances, as they've been developed throughout the county, have found other details to improve on, and so I know that we have, our staff and legal counsel already have prepared language for our consideration on reusable bags, so that's something that, again, there was strong support by the board for their ordinance to move forward.
I thought they missed the deadline. I'm so confused. I mean, the state law's in place. You had to have a deadline. The deadline was in September.
There is an appeal to that, I believe, and so the implementation of the state ordinance has not taken effect, so people are now, even though these local ordinances may be moot when and if the state does apply, people are no longer waiting, basically.
Yeah, the nutshell version is that the challenge, the legal challenge includes that preemption clause. So, if it's successful, then there's no preemption, and if it is unsuccessful, then whatever the town adopts would just fade away and the state law would take effect. But there is a chance that the, the local ordinance, even if passed after the deadline, would continue to be in effect.
The current plan we have is the draft that we've been working on is going to the Go Green team for feedback at their next meeting, and it's going to be in front of the council in March, the first meeting in March for your adoption or consideration, I should say, not adoption, your consideration.
Thank you.
Any other meeting reports? I'm doubting since there wasn't a lot of activity in late December.
Well, we had NCTPA. Do you want to hear about the red-toed frog?
Is it significant to our community?
Uh, well, if, you know, it was a big discussion point. It was, as you drive along Jameson Canyon, you'll notice that there's this plastic fence that runs the whole length and it's so that the red-toed frog, if there is any there, can't jump across the freeway. So, and then over time, the fence will just degrade.
I think there was some question from the board prior to the meeting that I missed about their understanding that that was supposed to be temporary during construction, and then they were told, no.
No, it's permanent. It was a state mandate by the fish and game.
Even though there are underpasses for wildlife.
It's to train the frog because the frog, if you have a barrier, can't jump across all the lanes. So, now it's supposed to jump into the ditch and breed, if it's there.
Okay. Thank you for that report.
That was riveting.
Oh. Hope that makes the paper.
I hope so too.
Actually, one of your better ones.
That's good. That was the best line tonight.
It does not mean that everyone else should start with their, anyway, I'm sure there are no other reports like that.
Now that you go down Jameson Canyon.
You might want to check before you encourage.
I'm going to move on to the fact we have no closed session, correct?
That is correct.
And I will enter a motion to adjourn to our next regular council meeting of Tuesday, January 19th at 6:00 PM.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night.